All right. Okay, good. All right, good morning, everyone. Thank you for attending. This is the March 21st Criminal Justice and Public Safety Committee meeting. I'll call the meeting to order. First order of business is to approve the minutes of the February 25th meeting. Hopefully, you've had a chance to review that. Motion by Supervisor Driscoll, second by Supervisor McDevitt. Any discussion, question? All those in favor approving the minutes without corrections signify saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Thank you. We'll handle the District Attorney's agenda first. District Attorney is here. We appreciate your presence. We have one item. The request is to fill Legal Clerk two, number three position.
Yeah, you just stole my thunder. That's essentially, we had an individual move into another role, and so we have this open position. So we're hoping to fill it. It's budgeted. It's one of the positions in the office. And it's the position that focuses on that discovery work that you've heard me probably drone on about. So that's our request today.
Okay, very good. Motion?
Yep.
Motion by Supervisor Driscoll, second by Supervisor McDevitt. Any discussion or question on it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Carrie, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other items for discussion?
No, that's it for today.
Thank you for being here. We appreciate it. Next is the Warren County Assigned Counsel. Do we have a representative?
Is there about time?
Yeah. Wow. Talk about perfect timing. There's a, there is one item on the agenda. This is a request to renew the contract with the Rural Laurel Center for continued appellate coverage.
That's it? You do all my work for me?
Good. That's it?
That's it. That's all I got. Any questions?
No questions.
Same prices last year. They're doing a good job. No increases. I think we should stick with them.
Good. Is there a motion to move this forward? Supervisor Diamond, second by Supervisor McDevitt. Any discussion or question on the issue? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Any other discussion?
Nice to finally meet you.
Likewise. Thank you. Appreciate your presence.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Next item is the Public Defender agenda. Marcy, thank you for being here. If you would lower that microphone so that anybody online can also hear us.
And I have to adjust this because I know you can't see me any other way.
That's fine. Thank you. We've got six requests from the Public Defender's Office. The first four appear to be all related to fill vacancies. Marcy, may I correct?
Yes, please.
Okay, you want to go right ahead?
Yes. The first one is to fill the Public Defender position. The second one is to fill the Coordinating Assistant Public Defender. The third one is to fill the Part-Time Coordinating Assistant Public Defender. And the fourth one is to fill a vacancy for Legal Clerk. So I was hoping maybe you could take all four together at the same time.
Unless there's any objection, we'll handle all four together. Anybody want to do them individually? Motion to move?
All four.
Motion to move items one through four by Supervisor Driscoll. Second Supervisor Diamond, any discussion, question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Carrie, item number five, this is a notice to intent to fill vacant position, Legal Clerk, number one.
No, that was number four. Number, number, there's, there's total of five on my agenda. One is vacant position unless I have something wrong. Okay, 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 you have the old one.
Yeah.
So number five is to amend the travel policy. The DA's office is allowed to transport witnesses. DSS is allowed to transport clients and children and witnesses. So I'm just looking to have an item added to the resolution of 146 of 2021, which is also the prior resolution of 286 of 2020, to allow the Public Defender's Office to transport clients and witnesses.
All right, motion to move this forward.
With the question, too, Chairman. With the question also.
Yeah, sure. Motion by Supervisor Driscoll, second Supervisor Brammer. Other questions?
Thank you. So you have to go through all the channels of Attorney's Office, insurance and all that type of stuff.
Right. It's all, it's using county vehicles.
Okay.
And I've already spoken to the county attorney on this topic. And I've spoken to Mr. Moore on it also. And Tammy DeLorenzo. So I think that covers, I covered the bases before we put this on here.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Excuse me, any other questions, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Carrie? And Marcy, you've got a couple of discussion items?
Yes, you know, it, it really fits in with that last issue of travel is I had attorneys going to continuing legal education classes. These were virtual. And then the training by Ms. Leahy that she did, that was also virtual. But I think we're eventually going to be getting into in-person, going to continuing legal education classes and trainings. And so I think it all fits together. And I just wanted to let you know where the funding is going because when we have to pay for continuing legal education, it's funded by Office of Indigent Legal Services, but I'd like you to know what we're doing. So that was my discussion topic.
That's it?
Yep.
Okay, any questions from Marcy? Supervisor McDevitt?
Thank you, Marcy. The, the first item there in terms of discussion items, it appears to be potentially a very heavy topic, okay? A litigator's guide to understanding digital forensic evidence. Sounds heavy duty to me.
It was very heavy duty. And Ms. Barnes, Ms. Kelly Barnes, who went, is very up to date on these issues. And even she felt it was very heavy. And so there's a lot of materials in it. And there's a lot of changes going on daily. And there's been, Friday, I was on a statewide meeting. And we spent an hour and a half on digitalization and changes. So it's really a hot topic, and I continue to see it being a hot topic. And it's a lot of information. And there's a lot of concerns. How are you storing it? What's going on? Who can access it? What if systems fail? How can we organize the materials better? Because usually we get a huge amount of information on a big case. And then you have hours and hours to look through. And what are you looking through and how to organize it? And it's, it's really a very heavy topic.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from Marcy?
Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here. We appreciate it. Okay, we'll move on to the probation agenda. Morning. There's one action agenda item. That's a request to apply for 13A classification funding from the New York State Division of Criminal Justice Services in the amount of $13,140 for the term July 1, 2022 through 6/30/23.
Yes, sir. That is to support our pretrial release program. There's no match. This has been an annual grant for the last 30 years. So we look for permission to apply.
All right. Motion to move this forward. Supervisor Diamond, second by Supervisor McDevitt. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Carrie, anything else?
No, sir.
Thank you for being here. We appreciate it. Next, the agenda will be Office of Emergency Services. Emery is here. Got a few items. First, this is a resolution request to increase existing capital for the fire training center project. Emery?
Yes, so anything that's done with this program is funded 50% through Washington County. So this is to increase the budget by the amount that Washington County would be contributing to it.
All right. Motion to move this forward. Supervisor Brammer, second Supervisor Driscoll, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Carrie? Item number two is a resolution request to approve revisions to the Warren County Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan. Emery?
So this document provides an all-hazard management guidance to allow the county to meet its responsibilities to prevent, mitigate, respond, and recover from emergencies and disasters.
All right. Motion to move this forward. Supervisor Diamond, second Supervisor McDevitt. Any discussion, question? All those?
If I, Supervisor Leggett? May just comment. Yesterday, the town of Chester suffered an emergency. And OES Director Emery Mason was there with her assistant, Ashley, and Fire Coordinator Bartlett. And having these plans and keeping things updated are essential. I got a call from the director early in the morning, soon after she had, saying they were coming up. And I'll tell you, when, when it hits, you really want these online. So I applaud the department for being on top of that and the continuation of this. Thank you, Chairman.
Completely agree. Any other discussion? Supervisor McDevitt?
Yeah, Supervisor Leggett, a question is, when do you think the road, I saw it online yesterday morning, and when, when do you anticipate the highway to be open?
That Superintendent Hayjose was up there yesterday morning as well, surveying it, looking over with some of his guys. Engineer Todd Bynow was there as well. They figured, maybe about three days. It's a lot of fill and repair work to do. It's not the first time they've done it.
Any other questions? All those in favor moving this item forward, signify aye.
Aye.
Close. Carrie, item number two is a resolution request to approve revisions to the Warren County Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan.
Yeah, I think we want to move on to three, right? Two was the count, we just did two.
Okay.
All right, so we're going to move to number three, which would be a resolution request to appoint members to the Warren County Fire Advisory Board for the term of May 1, 2022, through April 30 of 2023.
Motion to move this forward. Supervisor McDevitt, second Supervisor Driscoll, any question, discussion? Supervisor Driscoll?
Pretty much every fire company is represented on that list.
Yes.
That's the way it works.
Yep, we try to do that, absolutely. Yep.
Thanks. Good. Any other questions? Supervisor McDevitt?
Yeah, just as, as an observation, I'm really happy to see Jim Scramble on there. He really is a incredibly knowledgeable guy when it comes to hazardous substances. And it's, you know, particularly in the, you know, the city of Glens Falls, maybe some closer outlying areas where we have manufacturing industrial facilities where they're, you know, using, you know, chemicals that, you know, in the event of a disaster may create some really terrible type circumstances. But to have somebody that knows what to apply in the, in the event of, of a fire and to do it correctly may save time, money, lives. And I, I like the fact that Jim is, you know, on there.
Yeah, absolutely. Yep.
Any other discussion? All those in favor moving this forward? Aye?
Aye.
Close. Carrie? Next, a resolution to appoint members of Warren County EMS Advisory Board?
Yes, so this appointment will be for May 1 of 2022 through April 30 of 2023.
Motion to move this forward. Supervisor Driscoll, second. Supervisor Brammer, any discussion or question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Carrie? Emery, anything else?
No, that's it.
Thank you for your continued service.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it. Final agenda items are the Sheriff's Office. Do we have anybody here or online? Chair? Just take a quick pause.
Did you signature that?
I did.
We're not getting paid by the hour, Chairman.
Do we hand them off? I saw an email within the last week or so where I think she indicated that hand them off to the, deliver them to McDonald's.
Oh, is it? I thought she said, I thought Margaret had mentioned.
Just while we're waiting, just a point of notice. Tomorrow morning scheduled, actually tomorrow afternoon at noon is scheduled a joint Public Works and Criminal Justice Public Safety Committee meeting. I have to be on the road at noon tomorrow for a meeting. So I've asked Supervisor, our Supervisor Brammer, Vice Chair, are you available tomorrow with Chair, co-chair of that meeting?
Yes, yes. What time was it again?
Well, it's scheduled for noon.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, and anytime after that. Yeah, I'm around.
Okay.
I'm planning to be there.
Thank you.
Yes.
Other committee members hopefully available. Just as a reminder, we need four for quorum, and we also need four from firm of the vote.
Is that, where's, where, is that occurring in this building?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Okay.
When we have a joint meeting, Ryan, do we need four members? If, if, if they're not, if they don't overlap and serve on both committees, do we need four from each or?
Yeah, that's my understanding.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Man, it was a question about the joint meeting, just to confirm so everybody's on the same page. They said we need four for quorum, four for firm of vote. Is that from each committee?
Yes. So each committee votes independently? So typically what would happen is say, whichever one goes first, the Public Safety goes first. We need four affirmative votes from that committee in order for Public Works to act, and then they would take it together. Any resolution that comes out would come from both committees, which we will need.
Okay. Thank you.
But it's possible that, that an individual could serve on both of those committees.
Yes.
So, yeah.
Yep.
So that would necessarily have to be eight. Eight could be five or six.
You can do double duty.
Sure.
Yes.
Hey, Frank Floyd.
For your information. Item number one.
I saw people out raking out their yards. And this morning, I woke up to frost on the windshield. You're not there yet.
Thank you.
In Glens Falls, we actually
I know.
Put out a press release, discouraged people from their yard. That's what we have to do in Glens Falls, out until we're certain that we're not going to get any more snowfall.
Hey, Ben, did you go to any basketball games?
I did two Friday night, two Saturday, and two Sunday. But I couldn't get to the Sunday, Saturday night's games, which I wanted to. Yeah, it was, and it was good attendance.
Oh, great.
It was good attendance. I, I still go back to, you know, when I was, the eight years I was the contract administrator down there. So I just kind of walk around and strike up conversations with fans.
Good stuff.
And they were all excited about it. Of course, coming back to Glens Falls. But it was Chip Corlow and, and everyone, including Kevin. Let's do a great job. That's why we have it, I think, because
Yeah.
of the, the volunteer base and, you know, and the community really embracing it.
Oh, I think, yeah, I think we do. And I think our, our downtown is compact and closed.
Yeah.
And kind of, you can walk from the civic center to a restaurant. It makes for a
The restaurants that I heard, you know, the, the stores were, were just doing cartwheels. They were real excited about it.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it's, it's a little juice for
Yeah.
you know, a non-busy time, so to speak.
Yeah.
You know, it, yeah, so particularly the restaurants, you know.
I think Stillwater was the closest school district that we had playing there. But still, you know, a lot of the schools, and again, even with the price of gas, they're looking to, to get out and, and go someplace
Yeah.
of value. And that was, you know, the basketball tournament.
Yeah, well, it's, it's a, it's a fun event. And it's, just like you said, it's got a, a degree of homespun
Yeah.
you know, quality to it. And it, and people appreciate that, you know.
Yeah. I saw, I saw the sheriff there yesterday, no, yeah, yesterday. And I saw Doug at Saturday afternoon's games. And all that I saw, anyone else. Yeah, I saw some, some county employees there.
Yeah, let's, yeah. And I just wa, just watching it from, you know, on, you know, on the internet, whatever. I didn't go, but it, you know, got signatures and whatever. So NCAA, so it's a competitive situation, you know.
We're actually running ahead of schedule. That's what.
All right, we'll reconvene. Here we have the Sheriff's Agenda. Sheriff LaFara is present. We have five requests, I believe. First one is to amend two Warren County Sheriff's Office policies relating to the administration of leave, leave accruals, and the FMLA. Sure?
Yes. We have two policies. Essentially, they mirror one another. One is for the members of our Correction Division. One is for the members of our Public Safety Division. And contained within each of those is our Family and Medical Leave Act procedures. They were adopted by resolution last year, I believe in March or April. And we had an instance this year where we had an employee who went out and requested protective leave, unpaid leave, under FMLA for a pregnancy. It was approved. The employee was out. And we were contacted by the Treasurer's Office and advised that the employee, in accordance with their own policy, should have used all of her accrued leave time prior to being approved for unpaid FMLA. FMLA does not require the employer to force the employee to use all their accrued leave hours. So the only amendment, the change that we're making, is to eliminate the requirement for our employees to use their leave accruals prior to the approval of unpaid FMLA. And have it be discretionary. They can go out unpaid if they have leave accruals. For instance, we had another female in a similar circumstance out on pregnancy leave, who had a sufficient balance of sick leave. She elected to be out unpaid family medical leave using sick leave accruals. This other female was a newer employee, had very limited leave hours, could not have had the leave, and really did not want to exhaust all of her leave accruals in the first month, first two months of the year. So we did not take the leave away, and it's just an adjustment in our policy to make sure we're not forcing our employees to use their leave.
All right. We have a motion to move this forward. Supervisor McDevitt, second. Supervisor Brammer, discussion or question?
If I may, Chairman. Our office is in review of the proposed policy, and I spoke to County Attorney Elman, and we wish to push this item till next month. We currently have reached out to outside counsel for our employment issues and to provide some additional answers on some questions that we have. So we would just like to push this matter till next month.
I have no reservations with that whatsoever. We want to do it right.
Okay, so we had a motion to move this forward. Do you want to withdraw this?
If the County Attorney would rather see it go for another month, definitely, we, I will withdraw that request.
I will, yeah.
Okay, good. Supervisor Brammer, all in favor of, let's just table this. Aye. Close. Carrie, thank you. The second item, to create and fill a new per diem cook part-time position at hourly rate of $18.07. Sure?
Yes, last year, we had, we put in a request. We had an employee who is a full-time cook, who was out and off the payroll, out on a leave of absence, has recently returned, though, has been returning intermittently. When the approval was made last year for a part-time cook position, it was contingent on the absence of the full-time employee. We're in a situation now where we're not asking for a full part-time employee, but a per diem as-needed position to serve as cook when these vacancies occur. I know that the approval, now that the full-time employee is back and on the payroll, the approval is no longer there. So we no longer have approval for a part-time position. This would be something that we're asking for. I don't know. I think it's going to be challenging to fill anyways, to try to find somebody that's going to be available to come and work in our kitchen as we need. It might be a challenge. We're hoping between a couple of employees that we can do that. It will allow us to maintain our staffing, reduce our overtime, and plug these holes with this position.
Motion to move this forward. Supervisor McDevitt, second. Supervisor Driscoll, any discussion, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Carrie? The next item is ratify our actions in regard to submission of the application of New York State Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Services 2020 statewide interoperable communications grant program. Sure?
This is our annual SICG grant that comes in each year. We, we made application. We've received an award for $474,832. Item number three and number four are both together. One is the request to accept the grant, and the other is to amend the budget in that amount. This allows us to increase and enhance our interoperability statewide through communications with other communication centers and law enforcement agencies.
Okay, motion to move items three and four together. Supervisor Brammer, second. Supervisor Driscoll, any discussion or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Close. Carrie? And I believe the last item is enter into an intermunicipal agreement with the county of Saratoga to share police and related law enforcement resources, personnel, and equipment. Sure?
Yes, this request came in from the Saratoga County and the Saratoga County Sheriff's Office. It would be an agreement that allows us to work in conjunction with them on a regular basis with their Narcotics Enforcement Unit, their members. The, our investigators frequently cross lines into Saratoga County, South Glens Falls. We do work with them. This just really outlines and codifies our relationship as far as personnel, resources, mutual sharing when we ask them to come into Warren County as well.
Motion to move this forward. Supervisor McDevitt, second. Supervisor Driscoll, any discussion, questions?
Yes.
Supervisor Diamond?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to, to put this vote off to the next month to have a little more time to read the contract. I've got some questions in regards to this. Currently, we do this within a handshake agreement. Is that correct? We're currently
We don't, we don't really have any agreement with Saratoga County. I will say to you that if Sheriff Zerlo called me today and said, I need assistance with law enforcement, we would just send the resources that we have available. And the same, if we called and asked for help here in Lake George Village, he would provide us that assistance. So there's really no agreement. And I think it protects both municipalities to have something out outlined, so if there were an injury or an expense that each municipality knows what their areas of responsibility are and expectations.
Is there going to be any additional cost to the taxpayers of Warren County for this?
I can't see where there would, because with or without this agreement, like I said, if the sheriff called and he asked, and we can help, we're going to help, so having the agreement in place isn't going to change what resources we would provide if they were available.
Could I suggest that we put something in the contract that specifically states that there will be no additional costs to Warren County and the city of Glens Falls? For this intermunicipal agreement, that there will be no additional costs?
If that's the will for it.
That's what I'd like to see personally, because i, if you look at the cost to the city of Glens Falls, we're paying four point six million dollars to have a policing agency in the city, we're paying one point one million dollars to provide road patrols and administrative costs to Warren County, and this, the taxpayers just can't take on any more costs. So I want to make sure if I'm going to support this agreement, that there is no additional cost going forward to either Warren County or the residents, and the residents of the city of Glens Falls.
Could I just ask for clarification, then? So, that would be hard, really, to, you may be tying the hands of our regional law enforcement partnerships. If we have an instance, for say, um, where there is a significant narcotics operation that occurs, and we have targets, if you will, suspects in Warren County, and we're working mutually in South Glens Falls, in Moreau, in Gansver, going back and forth, sharing resources, there's going to be an expense for our investigators to be working hand-in-hand in Saratoga County. So I don't know how, would you say then that our treasurer's office then would then reject, reject the payment of that salary for them working?
Well, we've been doing this for many years now, to your point. We've had multiple investigations, and we've been working with Saratoga County on investigations, whether it's criminal, whether it's drug-related, and there hasn't been any charge that I'm aware of. Uh, by formalizing a contract, I'm concerned that there may be charges coming forward, and, uh, yeah, I, I would prefer to have it stated in the contract specifically that there will be no additional cost under this intermunicipal agreement to, uh, the city of Glens Falls and Warren County. If you're looking at an intermunicipal agreement, first thing I would think of is that, where, where, where's the savings? But, being a city of fourteen thousand people, paying almost seven million dollars for policing, uh, is, is unaffordable.
I, I'm not debating...
Take that more cost, that concerns me.
I'm not debating that, I'm just trying to clarify, and in looking at it in the reverse, when we had civil unrest that was occurring and made its way into the city of Glens Falls, I can say to you that Sheriff Zerlo, um, he went to the nth degree, there were his members, his vehicles, his resources, he had said, "Sheriff, whatever you need, we're there for you." They were staged, they were, you know, not to get into locations, but they were here. So I, I just want to make sure you're just indicating that we're not going to receive a bill, any bills from Saratoga County to pay for anything, because, again, if they called and there were a similar circumstance, I, I don't want to have to think about an agreement and whether or not we're going to be able to pay to provide assistance if requested.
Well, I guess my point is that we've been do, providing this service for many years now, we haven't been billed, why would we start getting billed?
I don't think the focus really is on the financial portion of it. I know, for me, that's not my concern, I know that's not Sheriff Zerlo's concern, it's more to outline the area of his responsibility and liability, and if one of our members is in South Glens Falls and there's an injury, that injury is not going to be a general municipal law 207C claim against the county of Saratoga, it's going to be relating to the county of Warren and our employees. So it, it covers a number of aspects, it doesn't bind us to provide any service, we're not required, if we receive a call, to provide X numbers, it just states that we will work in conjunction. They're really common agreements. Um, we have similar agreements with the, with federal agencies, the FBI and the DEA currently, um, and I'm not trying to convince you, I just want to clarify before we move forward exactly what you're saying.
Yeah, all I'm saying is I'm all for intermunicipal relationships, I can, I can understand the need to provide assistance when called upon in Saratoga County, we've been doing it forever now, uh, and I'm not opposed to that, I'm not opposed to, uh, helping the city of Glens Falls, but I do have some concerns about now, uh, possibly paying for that service.
Okay.
So I would like to include language in there, that if, if it's agreeable about, uh, to this committee, that there will be no cost associated to this intermunicipal agreement, uh, to Warren County and the city of Glens Falls.
Supervisor Driscoll, you had a question?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, could I address the sheriff?
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
Do we have similar types of, uh, agreements with Washington, Essex, and Hamilton counties, to your knowledge?
We have in the past, we do not currently, we have the MOUs, memorandums of understandings are what, are what have been in place, but we don't. We've had regional, um, Scooby Unit agreements to dive mutually with other agencies, narcotics agreements, when we've had task force with Warren, Washington, Saratoga Counties, and we do not currently, same thing, we will go over to Washington County, we will do work over there with them, they come over across the border, do the same with us. Um, this isn't something that we sent out to Saratoga County, this was something that they suggested we enter into with them. I have no issue with, again, taking a look at it, making sure we're doing it intelligently. Uh, I personally have no reservations, I, I just, this, if this is going to be, this is going to be a binding agreement that's approved by resolution, I, I, I find it, I would think it'd be very challenging to put in there that there would be no expense to Warren County, because simply having one of our vehicles go into Saratoga County somewhere is an expense to the taxpayers of Warren County.
County Attorney.
For clarification purposes, do you mean that there's going to be no bill for Saratoga County's service within Warren County, so that we're not liable for any expenses that Saratoga County provides to our agency, or are you concerned about the entirety of the expenses, including...
I'm concerned about the cost to Warren County if we provide services to Saratoga County. And I would be concerned also, you know, in a contract, that, uh, if, if in fact Saratoga County comes to, uh, Warren County for assistance, uh, I would think that that would be a concern to Saratoga County if they're going to get, uh, if they're going to bill Warren County for the services or not. Right now, we have, uh, an agreement, mutual agreement between the sheriff's departments, and we've been providing, having this working relationship, and it also includes Glens Falls, and it works, it, it does work now, and it has worked, but I'm concerned if we don't, I'm concerned about the future if it becomes an issue of billing, because the city cannot take on any more costs associated to policing, whether it's Warren County, city of Glens Falls, or Saratoga County. Those are my concerns, this could end up into a situation where there's going to be billed, we're going to be billed for services, and we're going to have to pay for services, specifically the city, because the city is independent of both organizations, providing their own police presence, and I get, and, you know, if you look at the population of over fourteen thousand people, and you're looking at, uh, a cost for policing to the residents of the city, including the businesses, we're, we're close to, what'd they say, four point five, four point six, and almost one point two million dollars. We, we just cannot take any more costs. That's my personal thought.
Supervisor Brammer.
Thanks. As my colleague from Glens Falls mentioned earlier, the city taxpayers are paying both for the GFPD as well as for our share of the Warren County Sheriff's Department, and it, it gets to be a really heavy burden on the Glens Falls taxpayers. I understand, though, um, wanting to have a handshake, uh, an agreement with another municipality, and that includes Washington County and Essex County, um, and others, and I'm wondering if we have a similar intermunicipal agreement with the Glens Falls Police Department to kind of outline where our responsibilities and liabilities lie with that as well.
We don't, and only because the city of Glens Falls is in Warren County, so it really would not be necessary. We come into the city of Glens Falls, we will make arrests, we will make traffic stops, we do accident reconstructions for the city of Glens Falls Police Department, we serve civil, we serve civil process. For us, we don't even see a boundary line. We, there's a mutual respect and understanding that, you know, the city of Glens Falls Police Department takes care of their city, and we don't infringe, but we're also not invisible there, so it really isn't necessary. We're going to work with you, anytime the city calls, if the chief calls me and asks for anything, the answer is always yes, it's our county. This is different, because we're crossing outside of our jurisdiction.
Any other questions for the sheriff? We have a motion on the floor by Supervisor Driscoll, I believe, first, and Supervisor McDeck, McDevitt, second. Uh, Supervisor Light, you had a question?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for letting me chime in here. I don't know what the authority of Warren County is to take care of Glens Falls business when it comes into language there, that there will be no charge to Glens Falls on, on this either, because it's the county that picks up the full bill for the sheriff's office.
Supervisor McDevitt?
I'm just wondering, uh, you know, going forward, i, is there a way to, and I address this to our attorney, to create maybe some language that's, uh, mutually acceptable to Supervisor Diamond, uh, to ensure that, uh, all entities are protected, are satisfied, and I'm, and may, maybe, maybe, maybe we want to delay and, and enable our counsel to try to come up with language in, in coordination with Supervisor Diamond to, uh, keep all parties happy with, uh, with this issue. So that, 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 that's what I, I would propose at this point, if that's possible.
So you want to withdraw your second?
Yes, yes, sir, and, and basically ask if that's okay with the sheriff to, um, maybe get involved in these discussions, as I'm sure he will, and then, and maybe come forth at our next, uh, meeting and, uh...
Of course. Again, we're not in any hurry, this isn't anything, it's, it's not going to slow down public safety if this doesn't get executed this month, we'll delay, we want everyone to be satisfied, and, uh, again, we'll do it right.
Thank you very much, Sheriff.
There was an original motion by Supervisor Driscoll. Withdraw. Uh, we'll take a vote to table this until next meeting, or whenever the sheriff is, is ready for that. All those in favor of withdrawing this motion, moving forward? Close. All right, thank you, Sheriff, for working on that.
Certainly.
Um, I believe that was all of the resolution requests, you've got a few discussion items?
Yes. We, um, we've been having communications, when I say we, the members of our sheriff's office, department heads, county administrator, several supervisors, relating to the safety and security of our campus, our facilities, and, you know, I, we take it personal, it's, I, I see it as our responsibility, and, uh, we take it very seriously. We, I, I'm not going to get into it in a public meeting, the particulars of the circumstance, but there was a, a subject that came onto our complex with a weapon and pointed at one of our members, and, um, we've always known that the threat to our campus is real, and now it has shown itself. Um, I've had conversations with some of you, and our thoughts as a sheriff's office as far as a direction that we should be heading. I met with Sheriff Zerlo last week, and Saratoga County just recently hired three new patrol officers, and they're going to be using them in their county complexes. When I make this statement, I, I, I say it very carefully, cautiously, purposely, our security staff is fantastic, they're wonderful, they're committed, they do a great job, but they're limited in their capabilities, and working with civil service, there are certain things that they're authorized and permitted to do under their title, so for us, we need, it's my position that we need to have armed security within the complexes of the Warren County Municipal Center campus. And I know you could say that, well, the sheriff's office is right in a near shot, we're right next door, your cars are right there, I can see them, but it's different. Working with Mike Colvin, we're coming up with a system for panic alarms, and we're trying to work with Amy Klute to figure out the best way to make notification, our best responses, and I, I think it's time that we consider putting armed members inside both county complexes here on our campus, human services, DMV, we do that in conjunction with our security staff, I'm not suggesting we eliminate the security staff, I think it's time to increase security as people are entering. There is that fine line between having open government and your safety, and the safety of department heads. When this incident occurred at our fuel pumps, we've had a number of department heads who have reached out to our sheriff's office, and they're frightened, and we do what we can to put them at ease, but we have to be honest, again, the threat is real, and we want to make sure that we are as prepared as possible. With this, there will be an expense, and that falls right back in your laps, I, I put it off to you. Again, my suggestion would be that in both of those locations, we would have an armed patrol officer during the hours that the county is open, eight to four, nine to five, it would be, you know, up to you to, to decide that. If, if I were the one making the decision, it would be the same two officers assigned to those locations, so they would develop a rapport with your employees, they would develop good relationships, they would see things that someone who was in there occasionally would not see, because if something was out of the ordinary, they'd identify it very quickly, and if there were a panic alarm, you'd have somebody in that building that you wouldn't be waiting to call 911 and get a response from somebody where you'd think... So many members of the public, they drive by our sheriff's office and they see ten police cars sitting there, and they just assume that there's ten police officers sitting inside in a lounge, waiting for a call, and they run out and they go to the call, but we may have five patrol officers, I've explained this to you, covering nine hundred plus miles of Warren County, and if the panic alarm goes off during the daytime, it might be twenty minutes before you get somebody here inside your buildings. So it's something that we're thinking about, it's a discussion item, just to try to get all of you thinking about it. We are open to have meetings and have more discussions with, on this topic, um, but we recognize that, that the time is, we need to do something, we need to do better for our employees in Warren County. So that was it.
Thank you. Supervisor Brammer?
Just a quick comment on that, I know that we did receive a report from our insurance company about some of those security things that we could be doing, and I'm not sure where we are on all of those, but there seem to be some big-ticket items, like the magnetrometer at the door, which we haven't done yet, for safety. I think that, that's also something we need to look at.
Other comments? Supervisor McDevitt?
Just on a different...
Nothing else on this?
Not, not...
Any other questions, Supervisor Driscoll?
Thank you, Chairman.
Yeah, go ahead.
We have a, a few department sheriff, uh, uh, health services, um, uh, social services that, that have staff that typically are working evenings and/or, uh, weekends. Uh, I'm certainly not, uh, a big advocate of, of spending more money, but I'm also a, a very big advocate of, of spending money, uh, the way it should be spent, and, and, uh, please keep, you know, those, uh, staff members, uh, in your deliberations as, as we talk this through. Thank you.
Yes. Any other questions on this item? You had a separate question?
Yes, just a separate, I, I, I think I, a year or two ago, I maybe asked you this, but as far as your experience with, with COVID in, uh, in, in the jail, okay, and at that point, you, I think you had indicated to me, no one had, uh, none of the inmates had come down with COVID, uh, so I, I, that was a couple of years ago, uh, COVID seems to go up and down, and we don't seem to, if anyone has an answer on where we're going with COVID, I'd, I'd like to talk to them, but, but we don't, okay? So, the, so kind of what, what is your experience been?
I would like to be able to stand before you and say that COVID did not enter our facility, but unfortunately, that did not happen. Uh, we held it at bay for a very long time, I think our report card was, if not the best, one of the best in New York State. We went for a year and a half without having a case inside our facility, and it was due to our temporary protocols and the hard work of our, our staff. When Omicron came forward, uh, COVID entered our facility, and it entered with our officers, with our inmates, and when it did, we tightened on that much more, we still have temporary protocols in place. Um, anyone that enters our correctional facility now, whether it's a public space or the secure area, is wearing a mask, if they're out in a transport, they're in a mask, anytime an inmate comes in, they're isolated for fifteen days, so if they come in and they are infected, they're isolated, um, they receive immediate medical care upon their entry. So today, our staff is healthy, and our inmate population is healthy. Our inmate population is, continues to increase, which seems contradictory to everything going on, but, um, today's a good day, and I know that our, when you see, if you know any of our correction officers, all of our employees are, are tired, it's been a long two years for everybody, our correctional staff especially, it's really worn on them, and our numbers are down, we currently have five vacancies, we have not been able to even commence the process of filling those vacancies. We offered a civil service examination for the position of correction officer, eight people sat for that examination, and historically, if you're just looking at the numbers of those eight people, when we call for a physical agility test, four to six will show up for the test, two to three will be successful... will be successful in the physical agility testing, and one or two will get through the background screening process. So six months from now, we may be able to hire two correction officers, and we'll still have three vacancies. So our employees are going to be forced to work more mandatory overtime. I came before this board a couple of months ago, and I asked for contingent permanent appointments to help backfill extended leave for our members out of military service. We're not even at a point where we can fill our permanent positions, let alone do that. So it's been challenging for all, but I appreciate you asking.
Thank you. Thank you for the response. Thank you.
Thank you. Sheriff, you got another discussion item?
Yes.
Go ahead.
As you know, we are working with the treasurer's office to convert completely over into Nova Time for our payroll systems. And it's, it's been a little bit challenging. We're starting off slow. But while we're doing that, we are working with Heidi, and she is writing rules for Nova Time. And she's calling on a regular basis, calling and emailing daily, requesting rules. What happens under this circumstance? What do you do with this part-time employee? And Rob Lynch, Mike Swan have asked Terry and I to outline, codify rules. So what we plan on doing is presenting to you at some point, rules for our non-bargaining unit employees. Obviously, the rules that are outlined in a collective bargaining agreement, they're in the agreement, they're easy enough to read. This will be for our employees who are outside of that agreement. We intend to draft these in a way that they would be, I don't know if sustainable is the right word, but not requiring us to re-present them every year or two to the board, so they wouldn't have a salary schedule. It's just going to be essentially what occurs with a part-time employee if they're called in and they're expected to perform this duty. And it will make it easier for them, it'll alleviate the questions to us, and hopefully Nova Time, it'll give it a greater opportunity for success when we flip that switch and convert.
Any questions on this discussion item? Seeing none, Sheriff, you got one last item, I believe?
The final item, Terry just asked me to mention to you. I know he's brought it to the county administrator, county administrator's attention. We were testing a wireless device that attaches to a patrol car. We currently use MiFi's, a cellular device, which is really not, not really effective in Warren County. We, it's such a rural area, we have a lot of dead spots. The device that we tested, we didn't have any dead spots. We had some weak spots, Bakers Mills and some areas of Hague. But they're really effective, they're rather affordable, and we just bring it to your attention, because we're going to be presenting this for, with a request for ARPA funding. And I just wanted to explain to you, you might think, well, what would this have to do with ARPA funding? For us, we do a lot of work now digitally. Our records are digitized, we're on the computers all the time. If a computer shuts down, I'm useless at some point. For our patrol officers, there's a lot that they have to do, searches and paperwork that requires them to come back to the station. If we can have them do this in the field, they're coming less to the station, they're commingling less, it keeps our employees healthier, keeps the, the public safer, because they're out on the streets. So it's just something, the last page is an outline of proposal for these devices to equip all of our vehicles.
Any questions, comments on that? No? Sheriff, anything else?
No, sir.
Thank you for your presence today. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor, like it, if I may, before, the, it was about almost a year ago that
the sheriff had instituted a plan, is that right?
Yes, sir.
I was wondering if perhaps there could be a, an annual update on how things have gone with that at some point in time, maybe next month or something?
Absolutely. I did receive a request from Supervisor Brammer, and I'd be more than happy to let you know where we're at. Like I said, this is something for us that was really kind of more, more or less a launching point. It's going to be a living, breathing, I don't even want to call it a plan anymore, but experience for us. We're constantly trying to look forward and improve and stay ahead of the trends in law enforcement. It's challenging. And when I say law enforcement, I'm going to start talking not just so much about the plan, because that was focused more on police work, offenders, defendants, defendants' rights, but I want to focus not so much on just that, but also get into corrections. And there are a lot of legislative changes that are going to be coming forward in the field of corrections, and it's going to create some significant hardships, more so for our staff and some expenses for the county. So as we go forward, you know, I mentioned the Halt Act and that in a prior meeting. I will continue to give updates and keep you abreast. As you all know, I'm available anytime for a conference call, for a meeting, if any of you want to grab coffee, if you see something come through NISAC that's law enforcement related. We don't have to wait until this monthly meeting to have a conversation. I'd love to chat.
Thank you. Sheriff, any other discussion, any other items? No? Thanks for your presence, and thank you for all that you do and your entire staff of the county. All right, privilege of the floor, Supervisor Brammer.
Thanks, Chairman. I'm not sure if you covered it this, this at the very beginning about the public defenders interviews, but if anyone on the committee is interested, let me know, and we'll try to get more information from Supervisor Thomas.
I did not cover it at the beginning. I, I think I mentioned the other day, at our board meeting, I did ask Supervisor Brammer to take the lead for this committee. Depending on how many other interviews or panelists may be needed, she can certainly assist with putting that together. Do we have a timeline yet, or any information that we can start to plan?
I'm going to need to get, get back in touch with, with Marcy and Trish and Jackie and see where we're at. The last I knew, I think we had two applicants. I'm not sure whether we got any additional. It was just, I believe the application period was just closing as, as I, as I went out for vacation.
Okay, all right. Well, it's good to have you back, Supervisor Driscoll.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to see the, the resumes, but I, I respect, I think Supervisor Brammer said that we should, or Marcy said that we should probably try to keep it to a smaller number of, of people, not to intimidate maybe the candidates or whatever, so.
Yeah, well, I, I don't think there's really any issue in seeing the resume and the, the applications, whether, how many people are appropriate for the interview panel? I think that's probably what you're talking about.
Yes.
So, you know, I assume it would probably be at least a couple from each. We have Supervisor Thomas here today. I'm not sure if you have any thoughts yet on how you'd like to see that structured from your committee?
Yeah, I would think a couple of people.
Okay, all right. So I would ask Supervisor Brammer, if you're interested, feel free to reach out to her, or if she wants to reach out to somebody, and if the administrator would, anything that you might copy me, if you would copy Supervisor Brammer. So we're all, we all know, each other knows. I'd appreciate it. Thank you. Anything else from the committee members? Privilege of the floor. Amanda, do we have anybody online? If not, I would ask for a motion to adjourn. Supervisor Diamond, second by Supervisor McDevitt, on the discussion for adjournment. Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carrie, thank you all for being here. Greatly appreciate it.